Scoreless early on in our first half. We thank you for sticking with us here through some technical difficulties. Back to have you with us here, the St. Croix Legends and Minneapolis City SC. USL League 2 action here tonight. Hans Bristol back with you. And once again, appreciate you sticking with us through working out some technical knots here tonight. Good chance on a ball over the top from Minneapolis City while you were away. On a first corner opportunity, first set piece of this match here for the Crows. Ozuzu's going to chase this ball over the top, battling with a defender. Ozuzu trying to turn around a defender, but really physical work there from Jared Hecht. Ball does fall back here for the Legends and into the feet of Wakefield. Poked this ball wide on the near side for Bechtel. Goes back in for Wakefield on the inverted run. Just get a bit of a push there from Swollen. Will be a free kick here in a somewhat dangerous area for the Legends. Seen St. Croix take advantage of set piece opportunities throughout this season. Kind of have a spot here to have a look and Liam Ireland has got two goals this season, the goal all the way back early in the season against River Light and Sueno. Might be just a bit too far out of the penalty area for this take. Free kick here for St. Croix inside of our opening five minutes of this first half. Liam Ireland will take that one toward the goal and had Daniel Sessler off his line. Catches the football goal post, was trying to dip for that top left hand corner from a ways out. Ball ends up out of play. Minneapolis City right back onto the possession. This has been a Crows team just dominant at home at Hennepin Nelson Field there at Oxford University. Four wins and one draw. Away record has been up and down, one, one and two away from their home turf throughout this league season. They have come in flying high, just in the highest of rare forms. This ball gets deflected out of play. Five straight wins and through that stretch, 14 to three in goals in that coming win streak. Back on June 6th, their last loss with the currently tied at the top of this Heartland Division with Sueno FC. It was a 3-2, just a really good match with Sueno. They'll see them again coming up later on in the season. But an attack that when they get hot, three plus goals and four of their last five, that is what they have continued to work off of and is what has led them to some really key results throughout this season. Just about 10 minutes into this first half. Early corner opportunity to pose a threatening chance for Minneapolis City. It's all we've really seen between the two sides so far. This throw-in on the far side will go to the Legends. It's kind of consistency that Justin Oliver's gotten out of this Crows team. Meanwhile, Tyler Oliver in a two games going, that's this Minneapolis City SC going with the back five. As this ball slipped through, had eyes for Liam Ireland. Does come off his line and is collected there by Daniel Sessler. Shifted to a back four in that last most recent loss to River Light FC. A River Light team they drew 2-2 back in late May of this USL League 2 season. Tackle out toward the midfield. Kieran Robson trying to chase down that ball for the Legends. Ozuzu with a bit of pressure on, ball falls into the feet of the Crows on the far side. Trying to find some space open through midfield with this up to Curtis Wagner. He's going to leave it wide here for Heckan Lible. Trying to slice this ball through. Legends back line able to get to it first. Left back pulled down there on the foul. And you can see it there, June 18th, Minneapolis City a part of this five game winning streak, a 3-1 win over this Legends side. Bechtel, Highfield and Shaw the goals with that one against St. Croix. It's 1-1 at halftime and St. Croix actually got on the board first in that one in that last meeting in Minneapolis. Chipping game in that one as well, five yellow cards between the two teams. But at least the Crows came away with that three points out of that night. Chase Wakefield leading this ball back with Aiden Hillis has been as stable of a point in the starting 11 all season long for Tyler Oliver, right in that right center back role. And it really is the back four that Tyler Oliver going back to win this one here tonight. You have Ryan Bechtel on that right hand side. And what the brothers duos here tonight. You have a pair of Bechtels on these two teams, of course, the two Olivers as well. And the Swalens, Jacob Swollen, Joseph Swollen. All players that played against or with each other for a long time coming up through these club levels. Bit of pressure there to Quinn Millard, who's also been the stable starting goalkeeper and goal for St. Croix throughout this league season. Good run up the left hand side here for Ryan Christensen. Just slipped this ball through. The Legends attacking down the left hand side, low driven cross. Ball comes in right at Wagner who will head it away. It's back down the far touchline here for Minneapolis City. And chipping this ball through, it's just too long on a run there for the Crows winger down that right hand side. Jackson Kirsch really forcing as the number 10 up top here tonight. Shay Bechtel just tried to chase that ball through down the right hand side. Kirsch I should say, seven goals, leading goal scorer coming into this one tonight. Steps up to it now, trying to keep it away from Wakefield. Not a good run ahead here come Minneapolis City with Kirsch on the turn, plays this ball forward for Bechtel to try to give chase, going to end up out of play, affecting off of a Minneapolis City player last. Warm conditions here tonight, we're informed there at least before kickoff, heat index was not in play for water cooling breaks here tonight, so you won't see that here between these two teams. And still scoreless here in this first half. Good crowd filling up these St. Croix Prep High School stands on the near side here tonight. Thrown on the far side here for St. Croix, second meeting between these two Twin Cities rivals in this regular season. Settle right back down for a Minneapolis City throw-in. It's the last game there for the Legends, that loss to River Light FC 2-1. It was 1-0 at halftime and Asher Ozuzu after River Light taking a two-goal lead. It was Ozuzu's late 70th minute goal to pull St. Croix in front. This time in this home turf was a 3-2 thriller against Rochester FC. That was a game that out of nowhere, late on in a rainy filled night, St. Croix were down two, pulled themselves within one. Good buildup here from the Crows, heavy on the touch. There on top of the penalty area, went his own ball back with Kirsch moving it in toward Bechtel on a turn and a sliding challenge there from Jacob Dinsio on that left hand side to clear that ball away for St. Croix. This ball sneaks ahead on through, trying to feed it out in front. He's going to fall this near side for Heckan Lible. His shot is deflected down. Ireland comes running up on it out from the attack. Ball still in play, headed down here by Minneapolis City. Take possession. Dominant possession start. Couple of cheers for the effort from the Crows. Many supporters here tonight. Ball driven over the top, does connect with Heckan Lible. Couldn't turn that header on goal and from the near side corner, just punched into the air and quickly played out of play. That was a good ball over the top that did find the head of Andrew Heckan Lible who found his way into there and a good chance as well, forcing Quinn Millard into a save. St. Croix can't clear and another shot taken on it is well wide. Crows asking questions here early on in this first half. Position where St. Croix many times this season have found themselves giving up that first goal. But a big swing with the right boot there of Jacob Swollen. He's only got one goal on the season. Has been included fairly consistently inside of the starting lineup for Minneapolis City Ramsey Oro will step over this goal kick here for the Legends. Late short to the side for Matthias Guffroy. It's deflected out of play there by Ian Shaw. Slow start to the season considering the five game winning streak the Crows have been on. Minneapolis City actually drawing their first two matches of the season since those two draws, just the one loss to Sueno FC who would have the head-to-head tiebreaker. And the two sides sharing the 20 points to be tied first and second. Now it's going to dribble this ball low. St. Croix to it first but turn it over. Minneapolis City, lots of the ball, lots of the possession here so far in this first half. With a good ball slipped through, run on toward goal, poking it back out in front. It does find a Crow eventually, but it's denied with the deflection out in front there by the Legends center back and a big save to deny an opportunity. A really nice buildup and running it up back onto it was Morgan Olson who had that last swing. Tough to tell even if Quinn Millard had to get a chance on that ball, but Olson has the swing and Ramsey Oro is the one who caught that ball right off the line for the Legends. Ball over the top, Dinsio to that one first. Kieran Robson trying to play it out of the penalty area, batted back down by the Crows. Minneapolis City, the threatening side here so far. Takeaway staying in bounds here and brought down is Matthias Guffroy on the foul on a collision there with Joe Highfield. Lovely little buildup from this Crows team here on that attacking opportunity in this first half. Shows you the quality that this team has had and trying to make some club history of being a first-time participant in USL League 2 playoffs. Top two teams vying for those two spots out of the Heartland Division. Couple of dribbles forward, Guffroy ended up losing it. Turnover here to the Crows and all the way out forward for Bechtel. Bechtel on the run, trying to force its way through for Highfield. Oro holding him off, still has to hold on to it, holds his balance and able to clear it away. And unable to chase that one down on the left hand side. His Legend, ball will go out of play for another throw-in. Minneapolis City SC and St. Croix Legends here tonight from Bayport, Minnesota, just off of the St. Croix River here, St. Croix Prep School, USL League 2 here tonight. Hans Bristol with you. So glad you're tuning in and joining us, this Twin Cities rivalry derby matchup here tonight between these two teams. Have a growing rivalry between these two clubs that has plenty of room to grow as brought down is Asher Ozuzu will bring the whistle and Jacob Swollen in on that tackle. His bench might have wanted a yellow card there to the experience Jacob Swollen. Sits right in that center. Really a true solid number eight CDM type of position there for Justin Oliver, just a player just really strong, great speed and athleticism. Ends up in all sorts of different positions through 90 minutes. Doesn't stand over this free kick here. This is Ryan Bechtel who will look for some white and gold uniforms of St. Croix to stand over this free kick. Ball gets deflected, first off of a Crow and a second Minneapolis City. Heckan Lible will just punch that ball out of play here for a throw-in. Warm conditions tonight on the turf here from both of these sides. See how the legs continue to do throughout the 90 minutes. Good throw-in into a dangerous area. Minneapolis to it there first. Ball gets loosely played out toward midfield. Ramsey Oro step up to it first at that midway mark. Play a long ball over the top and Daniel Sessler is the first to it there behind his big center back, Jared Hecht. Curtis Wagner bringing it forward. Does find the Crows into some space and a lovely bit of footwork here from Heckan Kirsch into the midfield, but Joe Highfield loses it. That's the buildup, that's the countering moments Crows have been looking for here in this one so far. The good run ahead for Jacob Dinsio into the penalty area, couldn't have a lot of help with him. Ball falls free for Kirsch to run up onto. Better attacking moves of Jacob Dinsio who will really play any position asked of, but specifically out of that midfield and this left back areas here tonight for the Legends. This one batted down by Kieran Robson directly in that midfield. Here tonight for the St. Croix Legends, trying to find a first winning result since all the way back on June 1st. Dinsio trying to play this ball forward and does fall into the Crows to take possession. And here comes Bechtel down the right hand side with the Crows threatening. As Bechtel will turn in around a defender, takes it on with the left foot and right into the low saving gloves of Quinn Millard. On a good run up field down that right hand side from, see, oh, he's Shay Bechtel. Got it to his left foot and took it on goal. Good battle between him and Ramsey Oro throughout this one here tonight. Quinn Millard comes up with that stop in goal for the Legends. Down the left hand side for St. Croix to try and jump on to with this ball over the top. Looking for Ozuzu, not there. First time touch taken on from Ryan Bechtel. Didn't get a lot behind it. Be a long chase here to the near bench and keeping his feet. Bechtel keeping that in play as well. Crow was late to that challenge and it'll be Ryan Bechtel who'll chase that one down with Ian Shawl onto this near touchline and colliding with, I believe it was Shay Bechtel. Just coming in to provide some support that time for the Crows. And will just lead to a Legends free kick with Ryan Bechtel still a bit slow to get back up onto his feet, but will stand over this free kick here for the Legends. Just inside of our 21 minutes into this first half. This ball falls here for the Legends and Liam Ireland falls to his right foot and just couldn't turn his body and take that one on goal for St. Croix. A driving low take on this free kick here from St. Croix and right into the feet of Liam Ireland and a good ball there from Bechtel. See this ball just almost caught him, just maybe just a little bit too heavy of a touch. Crows collapsed down well, first to it was Curtis Wagner. Might have just taken that shooting lane away from the dangerous right winger Liam Ireland for this St. Croix Legends side. Comes out here to Curtis Wagner, strong frame moving up field, a good slip ball here through for Heckan Lible. Bring it down this left hand side, right onto the head cleared away by Ramsey Oro. Heckan Lible gets it right back, turns toward the touchline and Oro steps up, able to play that ball away here for St. Croix and does find Liam Ireland back with some space on the right hand side. Ireland into the midfield here for St. Croix, a long run forward, tries to leave this one off for Ozuzu. It's fed out in front and just trickles wide. Countering buildup there from the Legends, nearly leads to our opening goal. Just this long run down through the midfield from Matthias Guffroy. And on with the left foot Ozuzu, might have been trying to find Liam Ireland there out in front who just went down to the turf diving at that ball. Any kind of piece of it may end up into the back of the net. Been a big statement start of this one here tonight. Legends can't convert as both sides finding some good chances early on in this one with Oro stepping up on a takeaway. He then loses it. Falls back here for Ian Shawl on that right hand side. Kind of take there from Ozuzu, think to play that ball across, take it on goal either way. Didn't even require a touch, anything much there from Daniel Sessler. Turn in midfield here from Chase Wakefield. Steady force in the midfield throughout this season so far from this St. Croix Legends Having ourselves a Twin Cities rivalry matchup here tonight in USL League 2 action out of the Heartland Division. St. Croix Legends and Minneapolis City. The Crows forcing a turnover into the attacking field. This is Highfield with some space. He'll take it across with his left foot and it goes wide. Will just settle up out for a goal kick. Both these teams finding themselves with opportunities, take strikes on at goal. Unable to convert, keeping a scoreless here so far. Just a dangerous spot for Joe Highfield right up against Aiden Hillis. Do want to make a roster correction here tonight. Number six here in this one tonight for the Legends is Pascal Leatherman. He's getting the start right in the midfield here tonight for St. Croix. I'll get that corrected onto my roster sheet here as well. Pascal Leatherman right in the midfield, has been involved, couple of touches early on here for the St. Croix Legends. Trying to find their way out of a losing skid of five consecutive matches and facing a, no team better form than this Crow side here tonight, but both sides been lively here in the early moments of this one. Daniel Sessler well off his line to collect that ball right in goal there for the Crows. Just inside about 10 minutes ago here in this first half of action, Minneapolis City and St. Croix Legends as Highfield tried to flick this ball, just a pass slipped in the height of his feet over the top. Legends will get it right back and play it all the way back to Minneapolis City back line. As mentioned in this five game winning streak of only allowed three goals, it's been a 14 to 3 goal differential, up to 24 goals on the season now for Minneapolis City. Meanwhile, goal differential sits at minus eight coming into this one for the Legends, 12 goals, 20 allowed on their season so far. Hans Bristol with you on a warm night here in the St. Croix area just off of the St. Croix River for USL League 2 action. Great to have you along with us here tonight. Two teams representing the Twin Cities in USL League 2. Leatherman steps up on that ball, intercepted there momentarily. Wagner will bring it all the way back into Jared Hecht on this back line. As just mentioned, three goals allowed in the last five here for Minneapolis City SC. Just inside our 30th minute now. Both teams asking question, some good opportunities from both sides in this first half. On a warm night, having to deal with some high 80s temperatures even here into our evening here just outside of the Stillwater area. This ball clipped over the top to the far post, it's going to settle in the air and end up behind of goal as Morgan Olson has got a goal and an assist on the year so far. And well, as expected, get told no water break here tonight? Not the case, we will have a water break here on our field with just inside of 15 minutes left here into our first half. Quick break on the field, we'll step aside for a quick one here as well. Water hydration time here. Still scoreless first half, Legends and Crows.
When I arrived in the U.S. at 19, I struggled to find job opportunities without a high school diploma. Everything I have, my education, my career, my marriage, I owe to the Adult Literacy Center and my teachers.
Your achievement has set an example for so many students. Most importantly, your daughter.
Education was the key that unlocked all my opportunities.
When you graduate, they graduate. Visit finishyourdiploma.org to find free adult education centers near you.
First half hydration break here in USL League 2 action out of the Heartland Division. Make sure if we were wanting to get one here tonight, we're kind of told mixed information there before we started this one, but do indeed, smartly enough, have that hydration break here welcoming you back to USL League 2 action here tonight. The St. Croix Legends and Minneapolis City SC, the Crows. Two sides out of the Twin Cities renewing a rivalry here tonight. And so far, good chances, both ends of the field that we've seen from both of these sides, but nothing to speak of on the score sheet here between St. Croix and Minneapolis City. Good crowd on hand here tonight. St. Croix Prep School here in Bayport, Minnesota, just outside of the Hudson, Wisconsin and Stillwater, Minnesota areas. Good to have you along with us with our first half resuming into action here tonight. Hans Bristol with you, our VAC TV Sports. Had great coverage of St. Croix Legends, USL League 2 soccer all season long. Great crew out here on a warm night bringing you this USL League 2 action. As tradition breaks always kind of split these halves up a little bit. Both these teams, we're seeing good opportunities from both sides, try and collect their breath, of course, get into that hydration as well. This will be a throw-in here for Ryan Bechtel over the top. Crows got to it first, not yet cleared. Second touch, does this boss send this ball over the top? Aiden Hillis will chase all the way back here for the Legends. Trying to find their way out of a five game skid. The Legends opened up their season, a win, a draw and a loss in their first three of the year so far. Similar to the Crows, but had some games of one and two goal contests. Does not go their way with a good run ahead here by Dinsio trying to find Asher Ozuzu, but that ball well cleared away and out of play over to that far side of the field. And of course, another battle of the Olivers, the managers of both of these sides. Tyler Oliver for his Legends trying to get them out of this losing stretch and Justin Oliver's Minneapolis City Crows trying to stay atop of this Heartland Division. Good run ahead there by Dinsio, was clattered away. And the Legends will have their first corner opportunity of this first half here for St. Croix and it will be Pascal Leatherman on that far corner flag to take this corner kick here for the St. Croix Legends. All scoreless here, just approaching our final 12 minutes inside of our 33rd minute of this first half. Corner opportunity here for St. Croix, have built on some scoring. Have built on some scoring chances so far in this one. Leatherman will take this corner here for St. Croix. It's going to be a low driven ball right at Oru on the near post to flex off of Oru. And out of play on that farhand touchline, so it will just lead to what will be a throw-in. These two teams do have a Minnesota Super Cup semifinal upcoming. Won't be the last time these two sides will see each other. That'll be upcoming toward the end of July on the home field of Minneapolis City SC right in the south side of downtown Minneapolis, Augsburg University. Ball gets deflected and ends up out of play. Quick throwback in here from St. Croix. Ball played ahead here for Ozuzu, trying to punch it out toward midfield. Didn't find its way into Chase Wakefield. Long step up here for Robson trying to flick down to that ball first. Ball's here for Hecken Liebel on the near side and a run ahead here forward for Shaw. And Shaw still in some space, trying to leave it out wide and Highfield stepped up to it, couldn't get to it first into the nearside corner flag. Rolled its way over the end line and out of play. Into our 37th minute of this first half. Still scoreless, St. Croix and Minneapolis City SC here tonight in USL League Two action. Crows trying to stay low, up top toward the top of this division table with Swainio FC and team kind of have to keep an eye on there toward the top of this. Heartland is RKC's KC Third Coast who had a bit of a bizarre forfeit result in their last match out. Kind of providing a home trainer that took three points away from that RKC Third Coast team, which could be pivotal, would have been within one point of both Minneapolis and Swainio. Bit of a bizarre set of circumstances there in the RKC Third Coast-Chicago City match, but Chicago City the ones coming away with three points on the forfeit there from RKC. There's a step up in a challenge that brings a Crow down to the turf and we'll see our first booking here tonight. It will be Hyas Guffroy who will go down into the bookings here tonight. In our 38th minute. Guffroy into the referee's pocket on this yellow card. Just a bit of a late approach on this challenge here from Guffroy on the turn and was actually first to that ball, but that one was the one that brought down the sprawling Minneapolis Crow midfielder. So St. Croix into the bookings first and a free kick in a dangerous spot here for the Crows. Jackson Kirsh steps over with this ball over the top, gets played away quickly by the Legends toward this near touchline and will stay out of play here for a Minneapolis City SC throw-in. Approaching our 40th minute here of this first half. Minneapolis City and St. Croix in a Twin Cities-USL League Two rivalry renewed here tonight. Entertaining first half, good chances for both of these teams. Dangerous throw-in, that ball over the top. Miller didn't have to intervene, so it's going to fall for Jackson Kirsh on that right-hand side. That throw-in ends up out of play. Crows go with it quickly. This ball poked over the top. Legends get to it first. It's going to fall for Hecken Liebel and it settles out in front and it's headed home by Minneapolis City. Into the corner goes the celebration for the Crows who have the lead late here in the first half. Just keeping that ball alive and into a dangerous area. And Minneapolis City have the lead inside the 40th minute. Quick on the throw-in, just a ball flicked over the top. Legends couldn't deal with it right away. Here's my Hecken Label and the last one to it is Jared Hecht. Just going to have this goal for Minneapolis. And it's Hecht who is onto the score sheet. Last one who had to swing in was Andrew Hecken Liebel who just kind of took that left foot toward goal, but it is the Crows here late in the first half who will take a 1-0 lead here just minutes before halftime. St. Croix defensively just not able to deal with that one enough. Now here's something that Tyler Oliver is not happy about on the St. Croix bench to the fourth official. Could have been how quickly Minneapolis played that throw-in. Couldn't think of anything off of the replay else that Tyler Oliver would be not happy with, but Jared Hecht gets the goal for Minneapolis City. And Minneapolis City take the 1-0 lead here with massive points here tonight on the line, trying to stay atop of the Heartland Division and just was not cleared enough away quickly there defensively. Tyler Oliver, still some words for the fourth official after Minneapolis City take the lead and Justin Oliver and his bench. Plenty more happy on the side of things, taking the 1-0 lead here on the home turf of the St. Croix Legends. Minutes before halftime, there's been a couple of those types of right at the half marker goals throughout this season and have hurt Tyler Oliver's St. Croix Legends side. And the Crows strike for one here tonight. Approaching our 43rd minute here of this first half. Boy, I tell you what, Tyler Oliver, still lots of words for that fourth official. Don't always get the signal for what will be included on extra time, stoppage time here toward the end of this first half, but trying somewhat watch closely. And the fourth official kind of always just signals toward both these benches, but it's Jared Hecht who's on the end of a loose ball in the penalty area for the Crows to give them the 1-0 lead here out of this first half for Minneapolis City. Have the lead over their Twin Cities rival, St. Croix Legends. Hecken Label took the swing on it, the deflection came right out to Jared Hecht. First goal of the season for Minneapolis City. Off a throw-in, heads up, taking advantage of an opportunity there where the Crows into a bit of space. Hecken Label brings this ball ahead here approaching our final 90 seconds of this first half into the decided amount of stoppage time between the goal and our hydration break here out of this first half. Warm night here in Bayport. This is a dangerous ball that, boy, been a miscommunication there on the back line from St. Croix and Joe Highfield was in the area, steps up to it, took a swing at it, well out of play as we are into our final minute of this first half. The Crows in front off of a fifth win in a row there against Rochester FC back in their last win on June 27th. Hecken Label nearly adding on to back-back scoring as the Crows come again here this time up by one. That was a swinging ball in from Ian Shaw, had eyes for that back post, just goes wide. Beautiful touch on that chance on goal there from Ian Shaw. Has only got the one goal on his season so far. Highfield just kind of lays it off and Shaw just steps up to this one, has a big swing at it just outside of that top corner. Crows threatening to try and add on more. This ball gets away. Ozuzu's able to jump on top of it. He goes down. Ball gets cleared away and is played onto the feet of Daniel Sessler just for a moment. Haven't been many of those moments tonight, but Ozuzu running up on that ball into a threatening area. Crows able to handle that type of pressure. Now to that hydration break, always interesting, it kind of splits up these halves into two different halves and boy, out of that break, it has been the most dominant of this half Minneapolis City have been. Poor ball out of the penalty area there from Sessler, fell to Ozuzu right away. Right back into some open space here for Highfield, plays this ball forward. Ian Shaw giving chase. Quinn Millard first up to that one and plays this ball well out of play. Right into the fans here in the benches. So we're into our stoppage time of this first half. Ball's going to sneak all the way through. Crows might get to this one off the end line, but too long there on that pass for Hecken It's going to be a goal kick here for Ramsey Oro. To our extra added on time of this first half in a 1-0 Minneapolis City SC lead. Crows striking first here tonight with Jared Hecht on the end of a bouncing ball off a shot taken on goal by Andrew Hecken Liebel. Crows are going to be looking for more here. This ball slipped on through, trying to feed it out in front and finds Shaw, which was in the area as well. Crows able to clear it away. Liam Ireland steps up to this one now for the Legends. Into stoppage time of this first half. Ireland still going, battling right at Cole Schraggi down that right-hand side. Left-hand side I should say between Ireland and Schraggi, out for a St. Croix throw-in. Trying to find a response in the stoppage time moments of this first half. Suzu steps up and drags down a Crow defender, knocks that ball out of play for Minneapolis City. Cole Schraggi again there on that left-hand side of the St. Croix attack. Still find their way into the penalty area, throw-in here for St. Croix. Try and treat it like a set piece here for the Legends with the ball over the top flicked toward the near post. Just ends up out of play here for Crows as this one will end up finding its way out of a goal kick. Stoppage time here in the first half, Minneapolis City and St. Croix in USL League Two Heartland Division action. Jared Hecht on the end of a loose ball for his first goal of the season in the 40th minute for the Crows. Ball played forward by Sessler and the referee signals for halftime with Minneapolis City SC making the trip out here to St. Croix and finding themselves in the lead after our first 45 minutes. Jared Hecht stepping up on a loose ball in the penalty area for the Crows. Some words being shared from both these sides and a temper-filled first half in a rivalry of the Twin Cities clubs here out of USL League Two. Has that flair to this one here tonight and we will step into our halftime break after 45 minutes down, a second half to come. It's St. Croix nothing, Minneapolis City SC one. We'll step into our halftime break here as you are watching USL League Two St. Croix Legends Soccer right here on VAC TV Sports.
Love is a lesson that doesn't end. It knows no conditions, so you better buckle in. Love keeps you on your toes. It never stops, only grows. Love isn't easy, it's a commitment, especially when they're being their most resistant. Love is finding the right seat so you can take a breath, but remember, love isn't lax, it always double checks. Check that your kids are in the right seat at nitsa.gov/the-right-seat.
When I arrived in the U.S. at 19, I struggled to find job opportunities without a high school diploma. Everything I have, my education, my career, my marriage, I owe to the Adult Literacy Center and my teachers.
Your achievement has set an example for so many students. Most importantly, your daughter.
Education was the key that unlocked all my opportunities.
When you graduate, they graduate. Visit finishyourdiploma.org to find free adult education centers near you.
Everyone has a ritual. That small thing to keep us focused. A habit we never skip to clear our minds.